Attention, please welcome everybody that is on the board of July 11, 2023. My name is Marty Akers. I'm the chairman, vice chairman, Mr. Ray Dell, board members, Mr. Hamill, Mr. Chin, Mr. O'Brien. I would say our clerk, she's filling in for our clerk, she was our clerk for many, many years, Ms. Murphy, am I right? And the director of inspectional services, Mr. Conlon behind me. If anyone has a cell phone, please put it on vibrate or silent, not interrupt the meeting. If anyone wants to talk, please go outside. It's hard to hear as it is. And let's, I know the council is going to wait to go to, so I'm going to take care of that. First name on the old business, ZB A 2338, JBC Architect of Aarons to build a two and a half story addition, two car garage on the on the basement level on premises 28 Furnace Brook. Is the app kind of representative there? If I could, before we do this, Mr. Chin, if you could, anyone's going to speak tonight, anyone, please stand up and take an oath. If you don't take an oath, you will not speak here tonight. If you think you might speak, everyone that thinks they might speak, stand up and take an oath. If you don't, you will not speak tonight. Raise your right hand, please, Mr. Chin.
Do you swear to tell the truth, hold the truth, and nothing but the truth of the matter down here?
Thank you. Sorry, you have the floor.
Good evening, Chair and members of the board. My name is Bonnie Tan with JCBT Architect, representing my client here, Lauren Teese, the owner, representing on 28 Furnace Brook Parkway.
Do you write this, please?
Bonnie Tan, JCBT Architect, 585 Washington Street, Quincy, M.A. 0216. The subject property currently is a two and a half story, single family dwelling, sitting on a residential aid zoning with a 7,670 square feet lot area, surrounded by single family, two and a half story in the neighborhood. The existing two and a half story Gambriel style, single family home consists of 1,700 plus square feet of living space with three bed, one bath. We're proposing for a inside addition of two and a half story. We're not doing the garage anymore. And with a proposed gross living area of low less than 4,0398 square feet. That's gross living area. We're leaving the existing basement as a storage unfinished mechanical space. We're seeking for front yard setback variance and front yard paving over 20 feet. And hopefully, the character of the building, of the proposed design will improve the abutters value. And I did a little bit of research on the abutters property. Directly behind the This is the subject property right now. So directly behind the property, number 15 Maple Street, has a lot area of 6,854 square feet, which is smaller than our lot, with a gross living area of 4,400 square feet. Oh, that's sorry, that's number 21. That's another one behind that. So number 15 Maple Street is 5,227 square feet with 4,470 square feet of gross living area. And number 14 Maple is across the street from that one behind, 7,000 square feet with a gross living area of 5,200 gross living area. So I don't think what we are requesting is too much, and it's residential aid, so there's no restriction of FAR on it?
It's a pay sheet lot. Why do you come wheel to the right in the back?
In the back of, it's a corner lot.
I know, but you got three, three, what is it, 5.3 or 3.5?
That's not our, are you looking at the way?
No, no, I'm not. Jesus Christ. That's a wonderful, you're right.
What's your
38 Furnace Brook.
What's your living area? Not your gross living area, your total, your total living area?
Total, total living area.
Concealed in the house, take away your basement, give me your living area. So you've been a little disingenuous by saying that you're giving the living area of your house, and then giving the gross living area of the neighbor's house. So the living area of the neighbor's house is 2,042 square feet, not 4,400.
I don't have that information. I believe this
I mean, I'm getting it right off the city's website right now. Like, so you gave 4,470 as the gross living area, which includes porches, unfinished attics, unfinished basements, unfinished garages, you know, I mean, the actual living area is a 2,000 square foot house.
Right, so on the assessor website, gross living area is saying unfinished garage when it's attached, it includes in there too?
I, I understand that, but, but from an actual size and scale of the house, when we really get down to it, it's a 2,000 square foot house. Or 2,100 square foot house. It's not a, it's not a 4,400 square foot house that you're comparing to. I'm not, I'm just saying, don't be disingenuous. There's no reason to.
Totally understand, totally understand.
You can make decisions based on the reality of the situation.
We included it, we included the enclosed porch, we included it, metro area, I'll say about 3,500.
Okay, yeah, I want apples to apples of what an actual living area is. So there's no reason to go by other stuff. What are the variances?
And the paving, the driveway.
So front yard is existing, though it's not changing?
So the paving on it?
Yes.
That's, that's, you're adding, what are you adding over there?
Because the rear has to go after the little right setback to the wall on.
Yeah, 16, 16 feet.
What's your side left actually, the country where you're?
So this was the existing garage.
Right, which is gone.
And that was the same driveway. We adding this portion to it, just to widen. Right now, this retaining wall is so tight.
Yeah.
You pull in the car, you cannot get out the door at all. Yeah, you have to slide out from, climb off of the window. So they are taking this wall out and widening this area because we're not doing the garage anymore underneath the, in the basement, so we're just
So you're leaving existing garage over? Are you tearing it?
We're taking this garage out, taking this garage out, this part right here.
So will you have any tandem parking there? No, or is it everything stat?
No, not going to be tandem at all.
You got three cars there now?
So maybe, maybe a just guest comes over, side way, parking, so they don't park on the street.
So you're gonna, you're gonna move the paving over here? Are you leaving, see the survivors here? See this here? So that's the new paving?
That's the
Yeah, yeah, that'll work, yeah.
That's the new we can
Then you're going to pave this whole thing here in this. Huh?
We can do it that.
No, no. Yeah, I know.
Obviously, the next neighbor to the left.
Yeah, yeah. Any other questions right now? Go ahead.
What they're asking for is variances for the two
For the rear.
I'm sorry?
Two frontal, is that all?
Just front yard setback on that existing this side on Maple, on Maple, the street side, the front yard setback.
That's the only thing you're asking for?
And the paving at the driveway, yes, that's what we asked.
Side left, right?
Okay, so side left is the rear to the, to 15 Maple.
Right.
Which is, you know, it's 13, which is, it's just
So now you're saying, say it. You're requesting two now, it says two parking spaces, there should be three, no?
It's not, they only took two.
Yeah, because originally, originally, we have the, the parking in the basement because we moved to the neighbors, they don't want, yeah.
They never brought on the application. That's right off.
But isn't there enough room?
Two, we have two, maybe you can possibly three, three parking outside.
Yeah, it's only, yeah, you have sixteen there, you have three. What you think, Conlon is, well, yeah.
That little portion on the front that's separated by the retaining wall.
Yeah, because that's the front, the front's considered here and here.
One, two. Any questions?
We're trying to figure out what the variances on those sides.
Just the side, it's a corner lot.
It's on Maple, right?
Yeah, so the Maple is the only one.
Maple, Maple Street. It's really going to be funny.
That's not 11.3 to Maple.
Yeah, it's going down
11.3 is to the street, pull me along, am I wrong?
11.3 to the house.
Yeah, so that's the existing already.
No. It's got 14 right here, correct?
Yeah, so that's, you know, they're not even, they don't even need that to the back lot.
Yeah, it's two five.
Yeah.
So it's 25.
This is in compliance. They just need the one that's already existing, pre-existing.
Side left from the front, side left, not the rear.
Yeah. The rear is already in compliance. Yeah, that's what I was trying to figure out, I just thought, I thought we were, I was going to ask them why.
The front, the front is 23, it said 25.
That's already pre-existing.
Yeah, I know, it's, they're saying, it was, I think it went up.
It's dead.
Oh, it was 1923. It went up.
Everything else is
Went up six feet.
Originally, they were looking for true.
Sorry, I got confused.
Easy.
Any questions, guys?
No, no.
I'm okay. You can answer. Does anyone want to speak in favor? First call, second call, third call closed. All right. There's nothing from the DPDW. Oh, my, there you go, my, sorry. I'm looking, I'm looking at yours. Got a letter here from the DPDW requesting a record.
DPDW dated May 12, 2023, in regards to 28 Furnace Brook Parkway, we've submitted, received, we have reviewed the submitted for the above referenced project, and our comments are as follows. One, specify how much impervious area will be increased to the development. Two, provide plans showing the layout of utility grading drainage and the construction details. Three, explain how the surface runoff will be discharged and treated. Four, the existing watch parcels should be consolidated into one lot parcel for the development. The consolidation plan shall be recorded in the registry of deeds, Norfolk County. Five, upon completion of the project as built plan, showing all utilities and building footprints need to be submitted along with a digital file.
I don't have a hearing closed. Is there anyone opposed on the right side? Step up, name and address for the record, please.
I'm Susan Peter. I live at 38 Furnace Brook Parkway, so I'm on the Westerly side of 18 Furnace Brook. I have really two issues.
Okay.
One is the survey line that they put in place doesn't match with my survey line and doesn't match with the assessor's line. So I'm questioning if the sort of trajectory, the back point is right, but the trajectory is
Yeah, it's kind of high shape, sort of.
And if that impacts any of the
Well, it would, if it's not right, yeah, it would impact every.
Yeah, because
Anything else?
Yeah, I'm questioning also the, I'm not a two and a half story house, by the way. I'm only one and a half story. So where this house is going to be closer to my house and taller, I noticed that there's an extra five feet being added to the roof line. And I, I know I've asked Bonnie and she said you're not changing it, but I can't help but to look at, you know, the plans A21 is the original and A22 is the proposed, and when you look at sort of the elevation, it's going from like 20, 29 feet to like 35 feet, 35 feet still within the zoning, but it's all in the attic. So now that attic's going to be a 13 foot height attic. Is that livable space? Does that get added into the factor of all this?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah.
So we are not changing the roof height.
The roof line is
As it's going on the side. The, the existing This is the existing roof at the front, on the side facing the Maple Street. So this roof and structure stays, and we carry a hip along this P to connect the new addition and then start the new number Gambriel roof to match this, that had a lower the Gambriel. But the hoop, the hip roof, the new hip roof will be aligned with this existing
But if I look at
Align with this
From the original number, so I was thinking attic floor, right, attic floor 118.
That might be from the ground.
No, maybe three feet.
It's a grade, it's a grade changes. You might be looking at the different grade.
I was just looking at the attic floor to now the height being 118 to 130 something. That was what I was looking at.
So this, this right here is the existing, existing structure that's safe, and this is the hip that across. We're not touching this roof at all, the existing, this part is the existing.
Because what I just meant is here, see the attic level is 118?
Yep.
To 131, if we do the math, that's 13 feet. The old one was 118 to 126, that's seven and a half feet. So there's an extra five feet. Just looking at the map.
That might be a typo, but the total, the total of 2910, that'd be existing, and the proposed is the same. That might be a typo. So the total is the same, the overall height.
It might be from base elevation to a change.
But then you have four feet up, right? But then you got four feet up, right, you got four feet to the first, first one.
The overall dimension of the base, the.
Elevation, nice, it's just like.
So then the elevation.
Three eights, so that's probably what we're getting for a difference.
Yeah, that might be a typo that we have on the, this elevation that we're looking at.
One thirty-one, is it, is it, yeah, it's thirty-one four from first floor.
One thirty-one minus ninety-six.
One hundred, right, first floor, and then grade is nine sixty-four, right?
Yep.
It's three feet, yes, exactly thirty-five feet, correct?
And before it was twenty ninety something.
We're not changing it as, uh, in change of close to thirty, just twenty-nine ten.
But you got, you get, you got a three foot six from grade to first floor, right?
I think that number is typo. The dimension, there's a dimension line across, it's twenty-nine ten and a half.
Either way, what do you, what's your, what's your?
Either way, we ju, we know that thing works.
What's your interior, what's eight and a half feet?
Still five.
About eight and a half, yes.
And first and second, eight and a half feet?
Uh, the existing, let me see.
It's not like you're gonna have a house, so I guess, but that, it'll look.
We're dropping, we're dropping, it just seemed, it just seemed like it was higher, like, no, we're dropping, we're dropping the first floor.
Cause you don't have a lot that's down there a little bit.
We're dropping this, the new addition floor to get a higher ceiling, but on the second floor is aligned.
It's aligned, yeah.
And then the ceiling of the second floor is aligned with the existing.
With the existing, I'm just saying.
Well, I'm, I'm concerned about the, the drawings and who did them, because they don't match, and we will find, we'll talk about that in a minute.
So as far as the property line?
Yeah, that's, that's a biggie, if they don't match, yeah, it's a real big.
But that's something that we wouldn't deal with here, right?
Yeah, we could, we, we just bring it back, we make sure they're right.
Yeah.
If someone's saying they're wrong, they're wrong, if they're wrong, so not wrong, if somebody's wrong. Right, yeah, depends when you get the survey.
We can, we have Scott Rattle to do the survey, we can be, consult a different surveyor come in.
Did you have a survey or did you have a plot?
I did, I actually, it's funny, that's, that Kelly, I had him do my property a couple of years ago when I had my driveway put in.
Mm-hmm.
And I removed the stakes because I don't wanna see the ugly stakes. But the ba, the truth is, the back line, the back stake is, is right on, maybe, you know, give or take an inch, it's just, I think the trajectory.
How far is it off from the front?
Um, it's not that far, it's just, I love these bushes, and the way I like to talk about the bushes, but my survey showed the bushes are on my line and there's surveys showing it's a mix and mostly on their line, and I believe.
Shall we talk in a foot, two feet?
Yeah, foot, two feet. I mean, the, the total difference is three feet in length, is why.
Now's the time to get it figured out, you know?
Yeah, I do wanna get it figured out now.
This happened once before here.
I'm sorry?
This happened once before here. Every set of bushes on the street, the next neighbor owned. I swear to God, it was all, remember? The sidewalks that went to their house was the neighbors'.
Oh, jeez.
So we had to do the whole street over, everyone had a sign on that we moved this whole thing three feet to the sidewalk yours instead of the neighbors'.
Oh, boy.
It was bizarre. It really was, because we had three sets of drawings, none of them matched.
Yeah, well, I mean, I, I actually, I looked at my deed, their deed, the assessor's map, and then doesn't match this, so I felt confident that my survey was correct.
And I think they feel confident is correct, so we're gonna get.
Yeah, thank you, that's it, thank you.
Thank you.
I wanna put a, just a small comment on that. So the smallest setback, side yard setback to their, to her property is seventeen twenty-one, so if it's two feet off, it's still in the thirteen.
But if it's three feet or four, I don't know, what it is, but if it's wrong, it should be right.
Yeah.
Alright.
Understood.
Is there anyone else? Opposed on the right side? Name and address for the record, please.
Hi there, Shamir Patel, and I'm the abuser at fifteen Maple Road. Thank you for, for the time.
Yeah.
You don't need that. Uh, I have a handful of concerns, you know, the first one is the movement of the driveway closer to my home. We have a, a very established tree that, that blooms beautifully and, you know, quite a bit of green space between our existing home and what is the existing garage, and what they're proposing to do is dig out, you know, further, closer to, and I guess right up until, you know, the property line, which, you know, I have fear, my family has fear, that it's going to significantly damage the tree and eliminate the green space between our two homes. So if that could be, you know, reviewed or, or discussed, you know, with, with the new owners. The, the second is just the sheer size of the home compared to, to our home, and thank you for, for acknowledging that my home isn't a four thousand square foot home, but it, it's a modest two thousand square foot, you know, single family home, and, you know, we're fortunate to have two and a half stories, Sue, I'm like you. But, um, you know, what, what we did notice is just the sheer size of this home, if you, if you count, you know, finished square footage, you know, or even the unfinished square footage, it's gonna swallow up our home and, and Sue's home and some of the other homes on the house. It's just, it's gonna be an absolutely massive footprint, and, you know, I don't see value coming to our home, looking, you know, being in the shadow of a, you know, a six, seven thousand, you know, realistically, square foot home, and, you know, the original plan showed, you know, a finished basement with media room, wine room, et cetera. Um, and, you know, there's nothing prohibitive from that space being finished down the line, so, you know, that's my, my second concern, and I appreciate you folks looking into it for me.
Thank you, Mr. Patel.
Great, thank you.
Is there anyone else opposed on the right side? Counselor?
Counselor McCarthy, hey, he's got no one running against him, way to go, boss. Uh, Dave McCarthy, Wood One Forty-Eight Whitney Road. Um, this is one of the times where I come up here and kinda try to hope that we can come up with the best solution. I think, um, Sue came up earlier, uh, the first young lady, uh, about the surveying of the, of the land, and I know that, uh, all those houses down there, Shamir, the Ryans next door, Sue, the corner lot here that Lorraine's looking at, they, they all kinda pie in to the back, you know, and it's kind of a unique little area there, but a beautiful area, and the home would be beautiful. It's a big house, it's a lot of house for a seventy-six, I think sixty-nine, I know it's conforming, it just makes it, but it is a big home. I'd like to see us take a step back and do a little more homework on the surveying, uh, you know, and do a little more homework maybe on, uh, the footage that we talked about, and we wanted to make sure was correct, uh, in the drawings till we move forward. Um, I sat with, um, Bonnie and company, tried to figure out a way to make it a smaller footprint.
Yeah.
As Shamir indicates, uh, it's going to be a, a, a big home and, you know, I, I know the neighbors and I know I don't wanna see it, and I know a lot of other folks who would be in that area don't wanna see something that's out of character.
Right.
Especially on that corner. Um, it's, uh, it's a great spot with some great homes, so, uh, you know, I'll leave it up to the board's discretion, but, um, I'd like to see us take a step back and, and take another good look at this and make sure that, uh, Sue's line is correct. Uh, uh, along with all the other, uh, the lines that, that form the lot, but a lot of those homes down here in Marymount do have sometimes, you know, that, that separation of hedges in different spots, it's not a fence line, and it did look a little close to me on her side too when we started talking about how much the house was gonna come that way. I wanna see it succeed though, I think Lorraine would be a great neighbor, and I, I think it would be a great addition to a house that's been sitting there empty and, you know, you don't want it to, uh, start falling apart or start looking a little blighted, so, um, I'll leave it up to you guys, but, um, that's where I stand, kind of a little re-group.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else, last call? I have two letters here that are in opposition, uh, Teresa Shan, do you speak tonight? Phyllis McGuire, did you speak tonight? Alright, we'll read them into the record.
Phyllis McGuire, twenty-one Wobbin Road. Uh, I'm concerned, the neighbor of, uh, I'm, I am a concerned neighbor of the additions that were presented to the zoning board for twenty-five Furnace. My understanding is the zone wants to add on many additions to the single family home and garage, which I'm opposition to. First, let me say that architect's plans, that the way they were originally with over five thousand square feet of living space and an eleven hundred square foot garage, it looked monstrous, much monstrous in this medium to small, single family home's neighborhood. Secondly, with the reduction to four thousand plus, would still be too big for the neighborhood. I've walked by the house every morning and it's still vacant even though the owner bought it in October, her shed doors left wide open. I can understand her wanting beachfront property, but to build such a mon, monstrous house with five bathrooms, three master suites, to me has Airbnb written all over it. She loves the beach and water views but does not live there, with all the additions on top of what it was purchased for, she could have bought direct waterfront on Shore Ave where there were two houses are recently renovated. Marymount's a sleepy little neighborhood, and if the owner does decide to rent it out as Airbnb, I am sure her budding neighbors with small children would not, would not be too pleased with strange cars coming and going. Please put my name on the record for opposition to these new plans as I cannot attend tonight's meeting. And then Patrick and Teresa Shan, twenty-four Moreland Road, we're writing to oppose the addition being proposed for twenty-eight Furnace Brook Parkway. This is a neighborhood of single family homes, not large or multifamily homes, and especially not the monstrosity trying to be developed. What is being proposed is over three times the size of the home that currently sits there, the home was purchased in February and has not had anyone living in it as of yet. We're strongly opposed to being, this being developed on this lot.
That's that, we'll call it, party here and closed. Uh, number one, we gotta check the lot lines, and number two, I think it's too big too for that, it's too big of a house. It's gotta be cut back a little bit, I know the lot lines, you got a seventy-six nine square foot, near four thousand square foot house, and it's just, you know, you, you try to make a house that looks with the neighborhood, and that wouldn't look like the neighborhood, unless they all grew at the same time and they're not gonna sell. Uh, I wouldn't be in favor of this house, I would be in favor of something a little smaller, not huge smaller, but smaller, make it fit with the neighborhood. And we gotta check the lot lines and the drawings too. My comments, yes?
I agree.
Yeah. So, wanna withdraw, or you wanna put away for a month and then come back with a settlement, or you want us to vote on this?
Uh, can we, uh, move aside, strike, and continue?
Alright, uh.
August the eleventh.
Are you around?
August, I just was looking at this, why don't I have it up?
I don't know, but I, I, we gotta find anyone here to say it's.
I, uh, can do the twenty second.
August, eight twenty-two?
Eight twenty-two on the end.
We have a motion, uh.
Z B A twenty-three thirty-eight J C B T, architect for a variance to build a two and a half stories side addition with a two car garage and basement level of the premise number twenty-eight Furnace Brook Parkway Quincy, I make a motion, move that hearing to August twenty-second.
You made a plan, small house. Okay. On the motion, standing all in favor, alright, opposed, or moved? Thank you. President of tonight's agenda, let's. On a new business, Jason Cole for various findings, to subdivide the lot into two lots, construct two townhouse with parking under, for each, each unit for one vehicle on the premise number twelve forty-seven C Street. Applicant representative, Counselor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Ms. Jim, and members of the board, Rob Plumbing from Plumbing and Plumbing, I do represent the applicant here, Mr. Jason Cole. Uh, Jason is the owner of twelve forty-seven, um, C Street. Uh, all with, also with me this evening is Dana, uh, Al, Al Fabello, who's our engineer of Merrill Engineers Land Surveyors. So Jason's, Dana's here with us as well, uh, he'll give a brief presentation on, uh, on his, as well. Uh, so twelve forty-seven C Street, uh, does consist of approximately a quarter acre, um, it's about ten thousand four hundred and four square feet lot in a business being zoning district, uh, currently improved by both a two-family residence and a single-family residence sort of to the westerly end of, of, of the property. Um, the two-family, uh, and the single-family, really both front, uh, C Street, um, the single-family's a little bit to the rear of, of the two-family. And this parcel actually, uh, is adjacent to Homestead Avenue as well. Uh, on that end is a vacant, uh, portion of this, of this property. Uh, it's on that vacant parcel that my client is proposing, uh, to, to, uh, well, first let me get into it, he's, he's subdividing this property into two parcels. Uh, one of these parcels, uh, will front C Street, uh, consisting of approximately, uh, sixty-nine eighty-nine square feet, uh, with the existing two-family as well as a single-family residence to remain on that particular lot. Uh, a second parcel, as I indicated, is the vacant portion of this property, um, which fronts, uh, Homestead Avenue. Uh, that will consist of, uh, four thousand one hun, one hundred and eighty square feet, uh, and this is where the proposed two-family duplex style residences, uh, will be. Each of these residences will contain two bedrooms, uh, two and a half bathrooms as well. Uh, it is providing parking for each of these units as well, there'll be a single car garage under each of the units. Uh, a second space will be in, in the driveway, um, uh, exiting onto, onto Homestead Avenue. The, the relief we are seeking this evening, uh, will be variances, minor variances for, um, for the lot size where five thousand is needed. We get forty-one eighty-three and some setback relief as well as being requested, you know, for this. Uh, we are requesting a finding as this is, is a change of the, of the, the use and character of the property, uh, that it will not be substantially more detrimental. You know, again, as we, we're meeting most of the dimensional requirements of the ordinance, and we're providing two vehicles per unit as well. And not required, uh, but Jason, uh, excuse me, Dana will speak a little bit, we are providing some stormwater retention as well. We'll get into those, uh, stormwater management onsite. Let me first say, um, Mr. Cole, Jason, uh, invested, um, in this property, twelve forty-seven C Street, uh, over two years ago. He's actually had resi, has resided in the single-family residences, if you know it, it's really, really small. You know, this is not a developer coming in, uh, to make a buck. Jason has been one of the more conscientious clients of mine, uh, he's actually, you know, met a lot of the neighbors, he has spoken to a lot of the neighbors of what he's proposing here, uh, he's assessed the entire area as well, Homestead, C Street. Uh, Homestead itself is primarily made up of, uh, two-family residences on much smaller lots with, with one being proposed here today. Uh, I know they're non-conforming, you know, uh, because they were built many years ago, uh, but it's important for me to, to point that out to the board, uh, that what Jason is proposing here is not that out of the ordinary, uh, compared to what is at that particular neighborhood. Uh, there's a couple, three families and a four family as well, we have Harvey's Landing as well, it's right there, is it a dense area? It certainly is, you know, I think Jason has, has designed something here with the help of his, his architect and his, uh, his engineer, uh, to provide a lot of landscaping as well. Um, he's, he's met with neighbors more than many of my clients ever do, you know, he's met with a lot of people on Homestead, he wanna make, he's, you know, very conscientious, wants to make sure they're, they're supportive and okay with what he's proposing here, uh, many of them are, uh, we've submitted letters before this board as well.
Your four, you got correct?
There should be more than there, yes, yeah.
That's what you gave me.
Yeah, and those are primarily on Homestead, which is where this, this particular property is, yeah. Did you get them, okay, I did receive a, uh, came back, but you, you get it, okay, good, thank you.
That's all?
Uh, we did, uh, through the assistance of, uh, Counselor McCarthy as well, we tried to have a neighborhood meeting as well, it was very difficult, uh, finding a venue to have it. Uh, we were proposing to have it right on Homestead Avenue as well, the weather was not that cooperative, you know, so we weren't able to have, uh, uh, a, a, a neighborhood meeting to include, you know, even more neighbors, but, but again, Jason took it upon himself to, to visit, um, and, and speak with many of the neighbors on Homestead and, and C Street as well. If you have no questions for me, I'd like Dana to, to be able to kinda present his, uh, you know, drain, drain, storm, uh, management and, and utilities and things, okay? Thank you. Flip this over.
Uh, good evening, uh, my name is Dana Altebello, I'm with Merrill Engineers Land Surveyors. Um, Robert touched on most of the overall site.
Address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, uh, four twenty-seven Columbia Road in Hanover, Massachusetts. Attorney Fleming, uh, touched on most of the overall existing site features, but currently, as you mentioned, there's, there's two residential structures onsite along C Street. Uh, this new project will remove some existing pads and concrete properties, uh, to the rear of the property and construct the, the new structure with, uh, two new, uh, townhouse units within it. Uh, the, the stormwater from the, for the new roof area will be directed, uh, via a sub-circus roof drain, uh, a subsurface roof drain collection system into a subsurface cul-de-sac infiltration system to the rear of the proposed structure. We have made sure that it's gonna be 10 feet off any surrounding off-site foundations just to make sure it meets the requirements of the stormwater management policy for the neighbors. All stormwater from the existing houses towards C Street. Currently, the lot is, it's very flat, but it's generally sloped, however gently towards Homestead Avenue from C Street. So we've kind of maintained that drainage connection. We'll just be routing the stormwater around the new structures through some shallow white swales to make sure it keeps going in the direction that it currently is. Sewer flows from the proposed structures have been calculated to be 440 gallons per day. This will be connected from a new sanitary sewer service to the existing six-inch clay sewer main within Homestead Avenue. Water, electric, and other utilities will also be connected to the existing utilities within the Homestead right of way later. And just one of the things, we have received comments from the DPW. They seem to be all pretty standard, minor comments. The applicant would just request that these can be conditions of approval, hopefully, if that's the way the board's...
Any questions, guys?
No.
No. Council, comments?
So thank you. You know, and again, I can't emphasize enough, you know, Jason, you know, over two and a half years ago made an investment, that's called 47 C Street. He loves the area. As a single-family, they're residing in now, it's very small, you know, and he thought hard about what he'd like to do on this vacant parcel, to remain in the area, to move into another unit, getting married next year. They're hoping to have a family as well. So loves the area, just another investment in it. And we feel this proposal would certainly benefit many people. You know, would certainly, you know, help tax revenue for the city of Quincy, having two units will certainly help other properties in increasing their values as well. So we're hoping for your consideration here this evening.
All right, we'll hear from the public, but here's my comments. There's two houses on this lot right. Now you're gonna cut that, two houses down 5,500, then you're gonna...
6,900.
6,900.
Almost 7,000.
Because, and then you're gonna have a 4,400-foot lot. And you keep saying empty lot. It's not an empty lot. You have a parcel here which you have two homes on. Now you wanna put a third there, and you say it's gonna help the neighborhood. That is the biggest detriment to Homestead Ave I've ever seen. That's a dead-end street. There's three families, four families. There's... I lived on that street. And I sold that house because that street is a horror show. Sometimes I couldn't even get in my driveway. There's people having a party and they pull up and they're four feet over my driveway. That place is like, this, this house don't deserve. That's just my opinion. I'm gonna put up front. I'm one. Let me hear from the public. Thank you, council. Is there anyone here that wants to speak in favor? I have four letters here that are people in favor that live in the neighborhood somewhere. I know one's right next door, another one perhaps.
Joseph Fallon, 1243B C Street, Quincy, Mass. I'm a neighbor. Jason Cole's, he's been my neighbor for maybe over a little of the year. During this time, he was preparing his rental properties for tenants. All the work that Jason had done, he seemed to follow along. We got to running tools, too early, too late. He always seems to stay busy taking care of his property. Explained to me that he would like to build another house on the property. I have no issues with him building this dwelling at his property. I believe that it should be allowed to put up a house if it's zoned for it. And I believe it's his right as a landlord. That was 1243B. And this is 1247 C Street. Apologize if I butcher some names. Saquon Amador, Katerina Kuzden, Joseph L Diaz, and Hannah Ford. Over the last year and a half, we've gotten to know Jason and Lara as our landlords and also our neighbors, and we feel lucky to have landlords that care about their tenants and take care of their property. Love housing, just like they do, and we're excited for them to build their home. We plan, we support their plan to build and ask you approve it as well. Ron Crombie, 13 Homestead Ave. I'm writing this letter to show my support for Jason Cole and building his house on Homestead Ave. I live at 13 Homestead Ave, and the property he intends to build won't affect me at all. I find no issues with his plans to build the duplex. This is Gerald and Victoria McGuigan, 1249 C Street. We are tenants at the 1249 C Street and lived here for about a year and a half, and we love it here. During this time, Jason and Lara have been wonderful landlords, and it's a pleasure to live next door. We fully support them building this house in what is now the backyard of our apartment. They live in the small house at 1251 C Street, and we understand they need to upgrade to a larger house as they start a family. But they have reiterated how they don't want to force us to leave so they can take our apartment. We really appreciate this. They've agreed to opportunity to build on the land. They are the owner. We fully support them. And then Joseph Fallon, 1243B C Street, I'm in... That's the same one.
That's the 10.
Yeah, that's the same one. I already read that one. Sorry. Yeah, sorry. I bet. Losing it already. It's early.
Anything from the DPW? I've got a letter from the DPW. I'd like to read the letter.
Date of June 2023, 1247 C Street. We've reviewed the submitted for the above referenced project, and our comments are as follows. One, install survey monuments to delineate the subdivision. The monuments shall be set by a professional land surveyor. Two, all subdivision plans shall have been recorded in the registry of deeds Norfolk County. All proposed buildings should have a house, should have house numbers assigned by the engineering division, DPW, before any building permit can be issued. Three, prepare maintenance plans for the shared utilities. Maintenance plans shall be recorded in the registry of deeds Norfolk County. Four, install two chambers of cul-de-sac 330 XL HD for drainage. Five, upon completion of the project, as-built plans showing all utilities and building footprints need to be submitted along with a digital file.
We'll call a party here and close. Anyone opposed to run aside? Step forward, state your name and address for the record, please.
Hello.
Hello.
I'm Jess Jordan. I live at 1243 C Street, House C. So Homestead is a dead end, but we're the house that's right there that everybody uses our driveway to walk through. Or that, like, easement right there.
Is that where they put the snow?
That's where they put the snow. That's also where the fire hydrant is.
Yeah, I know. Fire hydrants, yeah.
Yeah. So, very much opposed to this. The plans I looked at, it looks like it's gonna be like three feet from our window that this building's gonna be. I may be wrong with that. But that's what it looks like. It's gonna be very close. Homestead is a mess. I mean, the parking there is already crazy. If there's two families, maybe that's why, or the place. And our house is 800 square feet. It is not that big. This thing's gonna be huge next to us. People use that spot for street parking. I have a picture on my phone. I work overnight, so I get to see the street at all times during the day, and it's always a mess. There's always people walking through our little area. And now you're gonna add even more people there, which is just not gonna be great for the neighborhood. And I'm a little worried about even more congestion. You know, how, not how, but like Adam Shore area recently had a fire. It freaked me out. I mean, all the houses being so close together. And this thing's gonna be super, super close and super huge next to our house.
Thank you. Grill, name and address for the record, please.
David Boncheck, 1247, House C, C Street?
1243, right.
What's up?
1243.
1243, yeah.
Yeah, that's all right.
That's all right. My issue was the over-compact state that the street already is. Right now, you probably have three to four residents that live on the street that have to park over by the PL because there's already no room. And like she said, 308 C Street, they had a fire from Grill, took out that house, three cars, and a neighbor's house. Real close to a fire hydrant, so just having a fire hydrant right in front of the house, I don't think it's gonna do anything to help save my house from going up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jess.
Is there anyone else? Poser on the side? Name and address for the record, step up. If anyone else wants to speak, please line up over here so we can just move along.
Hi, thank you for your time. My name's Candace Gillum. I live at 5 Homestead. I live in a single-family, 516 square feet. Nice little two-story, but barely. First of all, the first thing is, this is a C Street address. Is that your house?
Yeah.
So you're familiar. It's very small.
I was 19 when I bought.
It's a great house. Hardly changed. Come visit sometime.
I do. I see it all the time. I'm down there all the time.
Oh, good. So this is a C Street address. Having a driveway come onto Homestead makes no sense. It's, as everyone else has mentioned, it's a very tight street. It's tight for garbage trucks, for delivery trucks, for garbage trucks. It's one way in and one way out, and plenty of parking on the sides. There are a couple of multifamily, but there's not too many. Most houses, even if they are two-family, are occupied by the family. I just think it's huge. If you look at the roof line of it compared to the other homes around, it's towering above. It's three stories. Which, of course, who doesn't want the views? Everybody does, but it just doesn't fit the neighborhood. They're asking for a variance in the lot size. It's already way too congested. I don't think that that is appropriate at this time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next.
How are you doing? My name is Brian Silkox. I live at 12 Homestead Ave, Quincy. My concerns are, as you heard, the parking. I've lived down there my whole life. I'm 58 years old. I've been down there 58 years. The parking sucks. Snow removal, it's nuts. That's my concern.
Thank you.
And, you know, the emergency response, you've got a fire hydrant right there. It just won't work. I've seen fistfights about parking down. I'm just trying to send my concern about that.
Thank you.
Good evening. Mike Daniels, occupant owner of 20 Homestead and owner of 22 as well. So directly across from the property. I won't beat up the St. Drum, right? Parking is certainly challenging. I do have tenant at 22 who parks directly in front of his unit. He's a Quincy police officer who works nights. He would be most likely losing his ability to park there if we were to try and accommodate that second.
I know, but that's his lot if he does. He gets the lot too. So it's his entrance, if they were to take you, right?
And being at the end of the street, obviously, during any snowstorm, plows just push the snow back there.
Goes right to the end.
And there's really nowhere for it to go until it melts. So even myself is parking down by PL at that point. So.
Thank you very much for your time. Thank you for coming to my... Is there anyone else? Council?
Dave McCarthy, Wardwoodne, Council, 48 Whitney Road. Yeah, I'm not thrilled about this one on Homestead Ave. It's overpopulated right now. Those houses are in tight. The street hasn't had any good parking ever. As Mr. Silkox indicated, I grew up down there on a hill and was on Homestead Ave with a lot of those guys. Nothing's really changed. It's a dead end now. But snow removal would be another impact. It was an impact now. It'd just be worse. And a lot of people that park down there, and I don't blame them, they'll go out towards the PL and the big parking lot and leave their cars at night because it's congested down there. So it's always a pet peeve of me too, that area that's business bee. And I kind of went after that a little bit a few years ago, and I'm probably gonna go after it again, to try to, try to limit any development that's in that area that's gonna be of anything that's gonna be larger than what's there now. I mean, the folks there now can add on to their house or, you know, if they were gonna knock it down and put it on the same footprint, we talked about that, things of that nature. But that's an area there that really should be differently zoned. Louis or Off the Hook and Peggy O'Salon and a few of the businesses are out on the corner. But everything else back then now is all residential. Back in the day, as we knew, when the Harvey's Wharf was there and et cetera, there were probably all little nooks and crannies of businesses in Homestead, that whole area. But I'm gonna try to change that so I can try to deflate anybody who wants to go in there and try to do something like this, because I just don't think that that area, there's no, there's no open capacity for anything down there now.
Thank you, council. Is there anyone else? Last call? Poser on the side? All the party here and close. Council, I'm looking at 11,000 something feet that you have two homes on, and I'm gonna vote no, just so you know. It's just, it don't make sense down there. It really doesn't. It's, the place is packed. The whole, the whole is like, there's nothing good that could come out of this for the people that live there, so. You already got two homes on your property, on his property, and I hope he makes money and enjoys it, but you know what he bought. Now, to take that and divide that and have 4,400 square foot duplex, three stories high, is gonna help that neighborhood? No. I think the people that live there, their home values are gonna go down, so I'll be voting no.
I understand the willingness to, and appreciate the willingness to come into a neighborhood and want to try and improve it, and put your blood, sweat, and tears into maintaining your current property, which it sounds like he has by all means, but I just, I don't like making lots more non-conforming. I voted against it numerous times, and I think that's making the entire lot more non-conforming by splitting this up, so I'd be no as well.
Yeah, you're subdividing a lot, you're leaving a lot small, you're putting a huge duplex on of the size of it. I mean, if you came in here with a single house on it, we'd probably question the size of it. I mean, the end of that street's just untenable, it's difficult. So I could not vote for this.
I wouldn't be in favor of creating that non-conforming lot.
I'll stick with Mike Boyd, but same feeling.
Mr. Chairman, I would only respectfully request that if we could continue the matter to the 22nd of August so I can have a better conversation with my client, on what the options are here.
I think you just heard.
With a potential withdrawal, but.
I think you just heard. We'll do that for you. I'll do that for you.
Thank you.
But understand, the guy, the guy, you can go for a single-family. It's just too crowded, and I wouldn't make, you get, you just, it's just not work. It just don't work down there.
I appreciate it.
All right. Could I have a motion to extend this to August 22nd, please?
Mr. Chairman, ZBA 2346, Jason Cole for a variance to finding to subdivide the lot into two lots and construct two townhouses with parking under each unit for one vehicle on premise number 1247 C Street Quincy. I make a motion to move that hearing to August 22nd.
Second.
On the motion, stand down all in favor. Aye, aye, both.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, council. Thank you very much. That was only two cases. You have to be here a while.
Nora, are you glad you left them?
See, she was smart. She got out when she could. Throw them in the tonight's table. I'm trying to get this guy, get to a week. Gotta get to a week, quick. ZBA 2347, Patricia Fisher for a variance to demolish the existing non-conforming garage and construct a new wider and longer garage on the premise number 50 Hobbymack Road. Applicant or representative? I'm trying to get you out of here, council.
Thank you.
Name and address for the record?
My name is Pat Fisher. I'm with Fisher Associates Architects, 35 Fisher Road in Waymouth, Massachusetts. And I represent the owners of 50 Hobbymack Road, Martin and Catherine Lynch.
Right. Just tell us what you want to do.
Okay. The owners currently would like to replace the existing one-car, one-story garage.
It's not existing, is it?
It is.
I'm surprised the wind didn't take it down.
Well, that's part of the problem is that its demolition is gonna take about two minutes. It's falling over on its own right now, as you can see.
Before somebody attracts.
And also, that's the family car, which doesn't actually fit inside the garage.
No, that's not a good, that's all horses.
So as the garage currently sits on the property, it's existing, non-conforming. It's only a foot and a half from the rear property line, two and a half feet from the side property line. The properties in the rear, right here, they have nothing in their backyards. Their houses are up here. This property right here is a double lot, so the house is actually over here on this lot. So there's nothing on this lot but a swimming pool. So the new garage... So the new garage, which we proposed would build on the same setback, won't be interfering with any structures close to it at all. So what they would like to do is build a new, larger garage, so they can put two cars in there. As the garage moves forward, it actually kicks away from the property line, so it becomes less.
Goes like that, right?
Yeah, it becomes less non-conforming as it moves forward, but it's parallel with the rear property lines. The garage also will be one-story, it will be under the maximum height of 16 feet, it will be within the 25% square footage of the existing home. And there's really no other relief that we're requesting.
The only thing I was wondering, why couldn't you move that, can you move that forward another six inches or get two feet so they can go around, any maintenance to get through there? I see a new fence going downside, and I don't know what's behind it, I didn't get behind the garage.
Surrounded by fences. Yeah, it's all fences.
Is there any chance of moving that, just so they can, two feet, so whoever, you know, to sell a house next door or someone else goes, you know, you're not coming on my property and paying or whatever.
He's asking if he can move the back of the garage six inches forward.
Is there a floor in there?
There is now, but it's all gonna get ripped out.
Oh, okay, so you can move it six inches on.
We could do that.
Just to give you a couple feet back to get back there, you don't know what your neighbor's gonna be like in two years, 20 years, you know what I mean?
Well, there's their fence up there, I'll never see that. Jealousy, never see you.
I believe that will still work, that won't change any of the other setbacks or any other problem. But you're okay with the footprint, which is 26 by 22, and we'll just shift it six inches forward.
Get his cars in there, you can also get a snowball and stuff in front of him and back.
And you can see from the.
Any questions?
Just jealousy.
Jealousy.
I can do one for you.
My lot doesn't look like that. No questions.
Nope, good.
Thank you. Anyone wanna speak in forward, in favor? First call, Counselor, you still got one more.
Dave McCarthy, Ward 1, 48 Whitney Road. I've known the Lynch's for a while, yeah, the garage definitely needs to be changed out. And it's a good idea to move it off the fence a little bit, like you said, you know, like we do with some of the other sheds and garages we get to, there's little access behind it. So I'm in full favor, and I'll keep an eye on Mr. Lynch, make sure he does what he needs to do.
Thank you, sir.
Is there anyone else wanna speak in favor? All party here in close, I got a letter here from the DPW, they reviewed the above referenced project and have no comments. Is there anyone opposed or undecided? First call, second call, third call closed. I'm all set, you going in favor?
I might vote against it, just out of jealousy.
Favor.
Can I have a motion, please?
ZBA 2347, Patricia Fisher, for a variance to demolish the existing non-conforming garage and construct a new wider, longer garage on premise number 50 Hobbit Mac Road. Quincy, with an additional six inches off the rear lot line, I make a motion to grant the variance.
Second.
On the motion, standing that all in favor, aye, opposed, or move.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have Washington Street, right, Counselor?
Yes, I do.
Yeah, Austin. This, the Counselor is, has to go to a funeral, so I'm in a wait, so I'm trying to get him out of here. So the person that was 198 Main Street, we'll get right to you. ZBA 2347, no.
49.
ZBA.
Do you want 49, Washington Street?
Yeah. ZBA 2349, I got my wrong paper, I wonder where it is. 49. Danilo Lopes, for a variance to install a 20-foot storage container in the parking lot of the property in 338 Washington Street, the Applicent representative here.
How are you guys doing today? My name is Danilo Lopes, I'm the owner of Nilo's Market at 338 Washington Street. And we're just requesting to install a brand-new shipping container, storage unit like a pod in our parking lot. We're a family-owned business, we've been in business for three years now. And we're running out of storage for like paper bags, napkins, that's what we're trying to use the pod for. And we synced out the butted list, we talked to the landlord, and talked to a couple people around the neighborhood, they seem to be fine with it.
What color is it?
It's gonna be white.
The things he cares about.
Things he cares about, he don't wanna go by and see a big giant, like, crack in the elbow or something, you know what I mean, it's just like. I have no questions, anyone have any questions?
I don't have any at this time.
No questions.
No questions.
Good. Just one parking space taken out?
Just one.
Okay, you can have a seat. Is there anyone wants to speak in favor? First call, second call, third call closed. I got a lot of here from the DPW, they reviewed the above referenced project and have no comments. Is there anyone opposed or undecided? Counselor, you're up, and you're out of here.
Not opposed, but I got a question. Dave McCarthy, 48 Whitney Road, Ward 1 Counselor, is there a container in that lot now?
No.
No.
No, that's an old Google shot we saw, I took a walk down, I was looking around.
Where is it?
Where is it, you know what I mean, it should be camouflaged, I don't know, you know? That's my only question, I'm fine, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else opposed or undecided? Third call, all party here in close. I'll be voting in favor.
I'm in favor.
In favor.
I'm in favor.
Likewise.
Motion?
Mr. Chairman, ZBA 2349, Danilo Lopes, for a variance to install a new 20-foot storage container in the parking lot of the property on premise number 338 Washington Street. Quincy, I make a motion to grant the variance.
Second.
On the motion, standing that all in favor, aye, opposed, or move. Thank you. Counselor, have a good night, I know you're on your way, you're busy, watch you later.
Thank you.
Further on to tonight's agenda, we'll go back to all business, ZBA 233. Isla Garcia, for a variance to remove the existing decks on the rear of the home and construct a new two-story addition on the premise number 198 Main Street. Applicent representative here.
Hello, good evening, members of the jury, my name is Isla Garcia.
Speak up a little, so you can hear, we get it on tape, we got a tape recorder.
Yes, good afternoon, members of the jury and the rest of the crew. My name is Isla Garcia, like mentioned on my previous hearing, my home is a family home, my mother lives on the first floor, I live on the second floor. My request of adding an extra bedroom in each unit is since my family's grown and I may need more space for privacy and comfort for both my kids and my foster kids. I'm a foster mother since 2018, and due to space, I have been limited to providing, limited to providing care for those children in need. My project right now is estimated to take place, to last from six to eight weeks.
Say that again?
It's, my project is estimated to last from six weeks to eight weeks.
Is that it?
Any questions? Yes.
I do, I do, you have one parking space, correct?
I added one more.
And you have two on the street, you park two cars?
Did you say you added, you're adding?
I added one more parking space, yes.
So you have two parking spaces?
Yes.
So a house, good, you get two in blood there. But the other cars are gonna be parking on the street?
There's no more cars, it's only two cars.
Two cars in front of your house every day, go by there, it's two cars.
That's, one of those cars, the one in my driveway, it's not working, so it's gonna be removed, and my car is gonna be parked there, so the second car will be parked on the second space.
But you wanna add on to a house that's pretty big, you have decks, and you only get two parking spaces. I'm not afraid of you, I'm afraid of the next person that moves in there, that's gonna have the same-sized house and bedrooms and everything, and no way to park these kids. No way to park them, you get kids 15, 17, and 18, yogurt cars, and that is a tough corner. I have a big concern, just letting you know, it's like, I don't think it's a good idea putting a bigger house when that house is really big as it is. It's a big house, you have a big home. And I know you have foster children and all that, and you wanna increase, but I just think it's too much for that neighborhood and that corner, that's just, any questions?
Didn't we ask her to add one space?
She did.
Yeah, she did, she added a space.
That's what I'm saying, we asked her to do that, and she did it.
Right, one space, we got two spaces, I didn't realize how bad it was, I kept going by there and watching. It's just cars parked there all the time, it's not her I'm worried about.
Oh, no, I understand.
I'm worried about the size of that house for the next owner, it's gonna be huge, and it's gonna be a lot of bedrooms, when I don't think, you know, it's a corner house, I mean, if she could make two more parking spaces in there, probably I would, if she could do something like that. It's just, I didn't realize how bad it was, so I stayed over there, I went over there three days in a row and watched what's going on over there in that corner.
What's the variance?
This is the front page.
Get the armpit side and rear setback block.
Right side? Does that lot come, that other lot comes all the way over?
Yeah. From side right, you get one and a half, and you should get eight feet.
Oh, but that's only from like the very rear, right? It's not the whole lot?
No. No.
It's like the neighbor on the back.
It's fine, you know, it's only two feet off, a foot and a half on the rear, no big deal. You're four feet off the front, which is always the same, that's the way it is. You know, they're gonna take, from side left, they're taking three feet out of it, almost four feet out of it. It's eliminated now, side right, you're going seven more feet, you know what I mean? So it's just, I just think it's, that's just me.
We're all right with the building?
Building? No, I'm not, I'm not with the added space in the back.
How much?
Because there's only two parking spaces now. I mean, if you get four parking spaces there for the size of the house, it's a huge house.
Oh, no, I know.
It's big now, it's gonna be real big afterwards, and it's a brutal corner. So whoever moves in there after them, you gonna have cars on the street?
No, I agree, I just.
I'm just thinking that way, that's all I'm thinking of, the next person, not her. You know, I don't think about the people that live there, because they're honest and they tell us the truth what they're using the house for, but what happens when they move? They get called away and they just sell the house. I mean, there's a way to get, I don't even know if you can get them in.
I mean, like, you have that, where did you put the additional spot right now? Did you have a plan for it?
Yes.
So you put it to the right?
Yeah, yeah. There's one in the house. Just put one more on the right. There's like no way to get back in.
I mean, technically.
Once you put that on there, the rear of the lot line in the back.
Anything about, like, the down to the, to the.
Yeah, how are you doing? My name is Hector Piero, I was the architectural designer for the project.
Did you come in late?
No, I wasn't here for the last meeting, but I was here the whole time.
Oh, you took the oath?
Yes, I did, yes. But we just put the parking space to the right, closer to the sidewalk, to not be able to take out, if we put on the other side, it'll take out parking in the front, and then in between the two driveways, probably like eight feet, so you obviously wouldn't fit a car there. So that's why we just shifted it to the right, to keep it closer towards the crosswalk that's there.
Just trying to figure it out.
I mean.
Can you get another space back there?
Yeah, well, unless we.
That's what I was saying.
Even tandem, I don't even care if they're tandem.
Put one in front.
No, put, you got one there, put one to the right, and then tandem one in the middle somehow to get in there, get in and out on the right.
Yeah, I mean, it takes away green space, but like, you could.
But you got a parking space.
But you got a parking space.
Three parking spaces off that corner, that's a brutal corner, I'm telling you. You can imagine a nightmare it's like.
Yeah, we could look into that, yeah, we can make that adjustment.
Yeah, it's tough.
Is there room?
Coming into South Street there.
Yeah, and you come around South Street, and people, you know, all of a sudden, there's cars in front of you.
I believe there is room, yes.
It looks like, I mean, just looking at the lot, like, you can, even, I mean, you could probably even go just to the right of it, you'd be cutting out more of that corner.
I'm sorry, you're cutting right to the right or is the crosswalk?
I mean, my only.
Like, right here, so, so.
Where's the crosswalk?
So it must be right here.
It's a right of the second lot.
So he's putting a spot, he's putting an additional spot right there.
Exactly.
But I was saying, you could probably even fit one just to the right of it. But he says it's a cross. Yeah, you could go in tandem, you could definitely go tandem right.
And if you go to the left, you'll be taking out the speed bar.
Which, yeah, which is no reason to do that, that doesn't help any of the shit. Especially because of the way you're talking like that corner, where people just fly right on.
Could you go back and have a tandem?
That's what you could, yeah, if you go tandem right here.
Then you should pick another piece up there.
Yeah, 'cause that's, you know, you could, you could do that.
Parking space number two, tandem.
I mean, like you said, you're not gonna use it now, but it's more, it's more for, you understand what I'm saying? Like, at some point, you might outgrow this house, or at some point, hopefully, you know, you do, and you wanna go somewhere else, you know, in Quincy. It's a big house that's gonna be built down on Furnace Brook if you need it. But, you know, like, there's, there's, it's just for that, for that max persons, you know, so that way we make sure, 'cause the house is gonna be big.
Big, big, big. You can make three out of that, guaranteed.
I believe so, yes.
I think there's probably room.
All right, why don't you bring us back a set of plans, and we'll see you next week, and it'll be quick, two weeks. 25th? 25th. What's the, what's the square footage of the addition?
Of the addition, it is, well, it's two levels, so it's gonna be 16 by 20, almost 22 feet. So right now, there's.
It's another 4, yeah, it's another 450.
Right, there's an existing deck there now, so we're just staying within that same.
Yeah, and taking the deck up and putting an addition. The house is big already, too, it's a big house. So can we just get another, yeah, can we get another set of plans? Can you do that?
Can you just show us where that parking spot is? All we need to do is just have her email it into the clerk, just showing us that parking spot, it'll be quicker.
You'll be in and out of here in the 20th.
And we'll make sure you're first.
I can't, I can't say that, because another counsel might have to get to it.
You know, it'll take me two seconds. It's Tom McCarthy, stop that when neighbors die.
Just for the record, they've taken care of the right rear corner where it was right up against the wall.
Right.
So as long as that continues to.
Yeah, we moved that over.
We can sit to it over.
Yeah. Right, get us another parking space down in motion for 25th, and then, well, let me, let me, let me hear from the people that were here, they'll have to come back. You can have a seat.
Thank you.
Is anyone wanna speak in favor? First call, second call, third call, closed? Got a lot of here from the DPW, they reviewed the above referenced project and have no comments. Is there anyone opposed or undecided? First call, second call, third call, okay, can I have a motion for 25th, please?
ZBA 23-3, Isla Garcia, for a variance to remove the existing decks on the rear of the home and construct a new two-story addition on the premise number 198 Main Street. Quincy, make a motion to move it to July 25th.
Second.
On the motion, standing that all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, or move. We'll see the 25th, get the plans in like a week, get them to the clerk, and then she can email to us or have me for the meeting, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further on to tonight's, we're down to.
48.
48, right, ZBA 2348, 44 St. Anne's Road. Help me with this, Mr. Chin.
Shabbing Wu.
Shabbing Wu, for finding to change the business use from an online retail business to a retail convenience store on premise 45 St. Anne's Road.
44.
44, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Name and address for the record?
Say it.
Your name and address.
Okay, my name is Shabbing Wu, yeah, looking, the address is 44 St. Anne's Road. The fact it is actually, you know, I'm the renter of 42 St. Anne's Road.
So you're gonna be in the left side?
Left side, yeah.
Is that where the convenience store is gonna be in 42?
Yeah, 42, yeah. 42 and 44 and 46 is all by one owner. Yeah, 44 is second pro, is the residential, and 42 and 46 is the first for commercial, yeah. I rented property for more than like 14 or 15 years already. Yeah, before it's an online store, I started, you know, basically online. Yeah, you know, the business getting worse and worse, especially after colists, I've been shutting down. So I'm not looking forward to opening a retail convenience store, yeah, just, that's why.
Not a retail?
Retail.
Oh, you want to open a retail?
Yes.
Okay, okay, I thought you said you didn't want.
Yeah.
That's why we're here, okay.
And the retail is only for convenience store, like, only snap and beverage, no alcohol, no, no tobacco.
Any products with nicotine at all?
No, just a snap, snap and drink.
Snack?
Snap, yeah.
Snack, okay. Is it milk, anything like that?
Maybe no milk.
So just, is this for the kids at the school?
Yeah. Yeah. Exactly.
Take advantage.
Captain of audience there.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
You running up and down the street.
Yeah, 'cause it's a, the, the area is, uh, quite isolated, so I don't look for the, you know, other kinds of customers, only for kids.
Yeah, the next convenience store is the next corner around the corner, which everyone walks that way, right? If they don't, they come this way, right?
Except don't get them coming out of the tunnel.
Yeah.
Contour alley.
Right. Any questions?
One question.
Yeah?
Any lottery, keynote?
No.
No.
No, no game, no, no lottery, no game.
Snacks and drinks?
Yeah, snack and drink, only.
Would you apply for lottery and keynote afterwards?
Say again?
Would you apply for a lottery?
No, 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 no. No one would go there for keynote, you know, it's, it's so isolated.
Well, I don't know, you're right, but people like to hang around and play keynote, drink snacks, eat snacks and drink.
No, I, 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 I won't do that.
No cannabis.
Any cannabis over there? You didn't ask him that, is it? You can have a seat. Is there anyone want to speak in favor? First call, second call? Third call? I don't know, call, I probably get in close. Have a letter here from the DPW that they've looked at the project, they have no comments, uh, is that opposition letter?
This is, um, two opposition letters and a brief concern from the ward also.
Oh, okay. Well, after, after the people speak. Is there anyone wants to speak in favor, I mean, opposed or undecided? Opposed or undecided, first call, second call? Third call? Why don't you read those letters into the record for us? Just names and addresses, and they're not in favor, I guess. You don't have to read the whole thing, just their address.
Well, this one doesn't have one.
It's no good. No address, no good.
Do you have any emails?
Yeah, I know, but people don't put their address in there. You know, hold this for a while.
Ryan Conley, forty-five Oval Road, unit thirty-four, I'm writing you in response to the letter I received regarding the property to forty-four Saint Anne's Road. I'm a resident of forty-five Oval Road, and my unit is directly behind the structure. I strongly reject the change in zoning warrants from an online retail business to a retail convenience store. I will first mention that there was previously a martial arts studio in that dwelling. It was extremely loud and disruptive to the neighborhood with constant martial arts performances on the back parking lot on the property, playing a lot of drums and music, so I do not believe there was an online retail business on the premise. Secondly, they have been doing overnight renovations to the property the past few months, which has violated the Quincy noise, noise, audience, these renovations typically are from nine PM to one AM. I also believe they have been doing renovations overnight and not in the daytime to conceal the property changes. Thirdly, with Central Middle School on the same street, it would bring loitering schoolchildren to hang around the store after school hours. I work from home and do not want the noise or problems that having a convenience store and a hundred feet of me will bring. Finally, this will cause more traffic to the area at school pickup and drop off. The parents use our parking lot at forty-five Oval Road as a cut through to get to Saint Anne's Road and the school. Adding a store that would only cause more traffic and potentially dangerous conditions for both cars and pedestrians, because the turn into Saint Anne's is difficult to navigate with poor visibility into the turn. For those reasons, I stated I am against the change. This is from the city councillor. Chuck Danlin, Ward five city councillor. The board should note that this location is directly across from Central Middle School and the new De Cristofaro Learning Center that is anticipated to be opening September twenty-four. Also during the school year, Saint Anne's Road is closed both in the morning and afternoon for school traffic. It's not closed.
Thank you.
It's just a one-way.
Yeah. I, I mean, I don't know, does, does, would the place need just snacks and drinks in the area? And you get a cup of milk or nothing, cereal, anything like that?
Yeah, it's kind of an odd structure, so it's.
It is a lot, it's really weird, you know, weird building.
We, we, we logged something in there before.
Was a church in there?
In that, in that building.
Isn't there, is there a church in, is, or is the church next door? Is there a church?
Yeah, yeah.
Next door, right?
But I thought, I thought we permitted something in there a few years ago.
I remember, but I think it was the house, wasn't there a house at the end they, they built? Or added on?
That was specifically this building, 'cause when I looked at it, I remembered it, because I remember going back because of the parking, whatever we, whatever we permitted in there, we wanted to make sure they had the parking. I can't even recall what it was, but obviously, it's gone now, I mean.
Right. Big building, a corner. I just, I, I, I don't know if it's needed, I don't even know if it's, but it's up to him, I guess. There's kids running down the street, I don't know.
How many parking spots here?
Two.
Do you park in one of those ones?
Yeah, just one, that's just, just one call, just one.
The only time that's reached parking is dismissal.
Yeah, I mean, I've been.
It's, it's all one way coming out of it, it's crossing guides everywhere now.
But there's also, to the point there is, who knows what the traffic's gonna look like with the new De Cristofaro Learning Center over? Like, I mean, that's still a year away from opening, so.
That's big.
You have no idea what kind, what's that gonna do to, I mean, traffic's already, I draw my kids off.
Any comments on this at all?
Nope.
You don't want? I don't know, I don't know, I don't know if it's a good idea by a school like that, right there, on the other side. If it's on the same side of the street, probably, yeah. The opposite side of the street, kids running across, getting, not paying attention, I don't know. I know everyone's watching, because it is, it's all those kids, everyone knows these kids.
What's gonna be up on the second floor? These are two-story units, right?
The second floor, you mean?
Yeah, do you, do you ring both floors? Or is it broken up?
The second floor is a residential.
A forty residential.
Yeah.
Forty-four is a.
Forty-four, yes.
That's the upstairs.
One unit up there.
How big is this floor? How big's your, your, what's the square foot?
Around eighty or ninety, no, sorry.
Eight hundred?
Two ninety, not, not, uh, two ninety.
We're getting a little over the cash, right?
Old-fashioned? Fashion.
What, what's the floor plan? So you got the convenience store? Yeah, I know, I know, but I see it, oh. Please, come in, right. I don't know. Any ideas, guys?
Yeah, I'd feel better.
I've been down there for years, like.
I'd feel better if I knew what, what the traffic was gonna be in a situation after that center opens up.
Yeah. No?
I, I mean, I've spent the last five years on the, in that block, and, and between three-thirty and, and like eight, nine thirty. I, I mean, there's traffic everywhere, it's a disaster, and who knows what it's gonna look like outside from school. I do, I do think there's probably like a little bit of a, a, a need for something else, you know? In terms of a retail store, so I'm not necessarily against it, I just think it's gonna be, you know, it's like every one of those, this challenge, is people are gonna buy. People are gonna take up other people's spot.
Well, I, I, I'm not worried about that, because I think ninety-nine percent of the business is gonna be kids, right? They're not gonna, no adult's gonna stop people around.
Teachers. Teachers eat and drink.
Most kids are, most kids are going to have a drop-off, picked up.
I know.
Picked up. The other, you know, the most of the time, you see the walkers coming the other way on here.
Underneath, right.
And then it keeps coming out the tunnel.
Mm-hmm.
So.
I think it's an odd look, I think it's gonna look odd. I don't understand a lot of that.
I don't think, I don't think it'll increase traffic, it just wants the kids going there.
No, I don't think it'll increase traffic at all.
No.
It's just an odd look.
I just think it's an odd place.
Weird place for a convenience store.
Yeah, it's kinda like.
But that's.
Right.
I'm, I'll vote in favor, I just don't think it'd be successful.
I don't either, that's why I'm voting no, I just don't think it's, I don't think it's a good idea on the side street.
I'm not in favor.
Huh?
I'm not in favor.
Not really.
That ends it, right?
Yeah. Uh, you have two people up here that don't want it. One, I don't know, the other two, I don't know, so you don't have it, so you gotta, you can either have us vote and vote it down, or we'll let you withdraw, and then come back when the new place is open, and we'll take a look at it. When the new building is open. And we'll put that in the record.
Okay, so.
We'll, uh, grab a motion, withdraw, but you can come back when the new building learning center is open, and then we can take a look at it again if, if he wants to reapply.
ZBA twenty-three, forty-eight, Shabing Wu, for finding to change the business use from an online retail business to a retail convenience store on the premise numbered forty-four Saint Anne's Road Quincy. Make a motion to withdraw without prejudice.
Second.
And he can come back within, uh, the opening of the new building, 'cause usually, if we say no, he's gonna wait two years.
Okay, and he allowed to return once the, uh, once the De Cristofaro Learning Center is open, right?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, um, so do I, we have prejudice, so there's no vote. We're just letting you, and when they, when the learning center is open, and we see what's going on in that corner, to be near, you can come back and apply.
Yeah, sure, I told you, apply again, or?
Yes.
It'll be a whole new case.
It'll be a whole new case. Thank you.
Thank you.
Further on to tonight's agenda. Patrick Foley for variance in finding to construct a third-story to the existing dwelling with a waterside balcony, twenty-five Bayside Road. Too tall, get around.
Yeah, right here. Brad Pierce, Pierce Home Design, nineteen thirty-three, yeah, you too. Comfortable, I'll bring him the tripod tonight, so.
That's alright.
This is alright.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, my name is Patrick Foley, and I'm the attorney representing twenty-five Bayside Road, um, in the residential age zoning district of the city. Uh, what we're proposing to do tonight, join here with Brad Pierce, who's the architect of the project. Um, twenty-five Bayside Road is an owner-occupied, two-bedroom, single-family home. Uh, like I mentioned previously, it's the residential age zoning district. The applicant resides here with his wife and his children. Um, applicant is seeking to add a story, which will include a home office, a living room, and a balcony like previously mentioned. Um, part of the reason for this is, the applicant is working a hundred percent now remote, um, so he needs the extra space upstairs. Um, this type of project has been done multiple times in this neighborhood over the last couple of years. Um, applicant has spoken with his neighbors about it, um, he gets along with many of them, and they seem pretty excited, uh, for him to do what everyone else in this neighborhood seems to be doing. I'm gonna have Brad just go over, draw us a little bit.
Yeah, sure. Uh, so twenty-five Bayside Road, uh, one thousand seven hundred fifty-five square foot existing structure, twenty feet wide, uh, occupies the majority of the site, uh, the property is, uh, just over thirty-seven hundred square feet. Um, the proposal is to add a third story comprised of six hundred forty-three square feet. Uh, again, it's going to be two offices and a bonus room, um, on the third level. With the ten-by-twenty deck, um, there's plenty of precedent for, um, this addition in the neighborhood. Um, the, the, the existing roof will be removed, the new roof will be four feet, eight, eight inches taller than the existing home. Uh, but the facade on Bayside Road will be reduced in size, uh, just by nature of having the, the third-story balcony. Um, other than that, the other, there's no lateral.
Still gonna see the third floor.
Yes, but it's set back ten feet.
And so.
I'm sorry?
Okay.
Yep, so, uh, the other, the only other improvements are exterior improvements, including siding, windows, roof, um, and interior renovations. There's no lateral additions proposed, uh, other than main, uh, landing into the main entry, and a small three-by, just under eight-foot deck, uh, on the back. More, more, um, more defined as a landing, landing to get up into the kitchen space.
You got a twenty-four hundred square foot house.
Yes.
Right, when we're done?
Yeah.
On thirty-one hundred square feet. What about the people in back, have you talked to them yet?
The, the applicant talked to all of his neighbors, he told them.
I know, and what did the guy behind him say about losing the view?
Uh, I believe he's losing the view, everything's blowing.
His phone have to be high.
It's up the street. It's up the street.
Right.
He's not here tonight, are you?
Huh?
If he's not here, he didn't have a lot.
No, that's, that doesn't mean that, maybe he's talking to his friends, he don't want hers down. Other people do that, they just, you call and pitch at us. Huh?
Yeah, have you started talking to the people?
Uh, we have spoken to the neighbors directing behind us.
Name and address, please.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, my name is Dara Cullen, twenty-five Bayside Road, I'm the owner of the property along with my husband. Uh, my husband has spoken to the owner of the property directing behind us on Monmouth Street. It's a lady, her name is Diana, I'm not sure of her second name. And she seemed, um, very enthusiastic to use for, for proposed plans.
How many parking spaces on that property are there?
Uh, it's a driveway and two squats, right?
Uh, are there driveway that you actually use?
There is a driveway to the side of the house adjacent to our neighbors on Bayside, and it's, I mean, you can squeeze two in really tight, um, yes.
Yeah, it's corner lot, very narrow.
I know, that's what I'm saying, you got a corner lot, real now, you got one space to park.
Did you ever look at putting parking behind you on Monmouth? I know there's no curb cut there, but did you ever look right on the Monmouth side of any parking there?
We, we and our neighbors do park along the side.
No, you park on the street, right?
On the street.
Yeah, 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 I was just saying, did you ever put, did you ever look into putting any parking there?
No, our backyard is extremely small.
Yeah, I know, it's tiny, I know the lot, I'm around the corner.
I don't, I have, I have no questions. Any questions?
Yeah, it's only going.
Steven?
Going from twenty-nine to thirty-three, so it's not a huge increase.
The question on this drawing, it looks like the corner of the building is on over the lot line.
That's, uh, that's the town assessor's map, uh, so we don't have a survey. We're not, we're not extending the footprints by really in any way.
Staying on the footprint, the footprints are right, not on the lot line.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I'm good. Yeah, I'm good, other than concerned about parking, but.
I know they all park in the street down there, and they all park everywhere, but, you know.
Huh? I don't like you.
Yeah, well, I know, it's in my home.
There's never been any parking on, like, that people just park in front of the van.
Bayside's private.
It's, uh, hot, private, way maintained by the city.
Yeah, right.
But I mean, it's, it's labeled as private.
It's labeled, labeled as maintained by the city.
They get down there, they follow, and do a.
Or a half. Public safety.
I know, and that's, that's.
It's nicer.
Yeah. No questions?
No, I'm good, thank you.
You can answer.
Thank you.
Is there anyone who wants to speak in favor? First call? Second call? Third call? Oh, I probably give him call. Are you here for B-side, Herb?
Yes.
I don't know.
They probably are.
Are you here for B-side?
Yes, you arrived late, and I apologize.
Oh, no, 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 that's fine, I just don't know, you wanna speak in favor?
Uh, I have some questions.
Okay, so you can come right after, right after, to let me speak.
Correct.
You have anything for the DPW? Wow. Busy week.
Yeah, good, all right.
Busy week. Nobody here would be DPW. Maybe you, the above referenced project, and have no comments. Is there anyone opposed or undecided? Wanna step up, state name and address for the record, and then we'll see what you got for questions.
You might wanna swear, I promise.
Sure.
Oh, yeah.
Just wanna tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in the matter now in hearing.
I do, and do you know how that came into being?
What came into being?
The oath.
No, never ask me that question.
Alright, what lesson did you?
Go ahead.
The lesson is, I used to sit in your seats, and we had an applicant who lied on an application.
Were you Ms. Misrimus?
Yes.
Yeah, it's a wall of them.
There's a lot of Marines around.
I see your name and all, a lot of just.
For the record, my name is Maureen Misrimus. I live at 49 Bayberry Road, I am in a butter, in a butter. And my question was, is this going to be a legitimate three-story? Or is it a two and a half?
Three-story.
It is a three-story. And is, is it gonna have an attic above the three-story? Could I, could I see the picture?
Well, no, it's gonna be like.
Nothing like it up there.
It's gonna be like a crawl space.
Three feet up there.
If that, yeah. They got a slanted roof with just a crawl space to get up there.
Just seems. I, I think, I heard you talking about parking when we first came in, and the parking is dreadful, this. So, what is the purpose of the addition?
They, they have a business, they work at home. I don't know if they have a business, but they both work at home, and they wanna put two offices upstairs.
And it's a residence A?
Residence A, two and a half stories.
And you can't have a business in residence A?
No, they both work at home, like I said, they're home, not work at home, home office, but I don't know if they, if they're busy enough, they said they work at home, I missed four of them.
Is that their business address?
I have no idea. I didn't, I didn't ask no one if, they just said they worked at home.
They said they worked from home.
I will find out.
They work from home.
Work from home.
Not run a business out of home.
They don't?
Work from home, yes.
Okay, so they have a business someplace else?
No, they don't have a business.
No, 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 everybody works from home these days.
Everybody works from home.
They work remotely.
Okay, yeah, okay, no, I, I thought you were saying.
If I really want two rooms upstairs and have offices, it could be two bedrooms when they.
What sort of a business?
It's not a business.
I mean, it's not my business.
So, you're not gonna have anybody?
No, no, they work from home.
No.
Okay, so there, there won't be people coming back?
No, 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 no.
Because the parking is dreadful.
Right.
It's absolutely dreadful, okay.
And anyone has a body or something, I'm trying to get them to get some parking on that property.
Yeah.
I mean, really, you're going up to the third story, which I don't like.
No.
It's wrong.
It's wrong, and it sets a precedent.
And that's not what you bought, you bought a two and a half story home.
Exactly.
I know.
And I spoke with a neighbor who is the director of butter,
Yeah.
who's the little teeny tiny house, and, you know, you just wonder what it's going to do to the, you know, the light and ventilation when you go up that high. I don't know if it would cast a shadow.
Really, it'll be east and west, so it's not gonna be shadow.
Yeah, 'cause it'll, yeah, see, it is an eastern explosion.
Might have a little, but I don't think there'd be much shading at all.
So, I guess, I'm here.
Yeah, he's ever seen.
I am pretty much just coming to find out what's going on.
Right.
Because nobody came and talked to the neighbors.
An opinion, you have an opinion? Cause you said you didn't know if you're far against, I don't, I don't know.
I, I, I don't like the idea of the three-story, I think it sets a dangerous precedent.
And I know, I, I know, like, people put domes on and stuff like that and try to.
And it is a variance, you're, they're asking for a variance.
Exactly.
And as I recall, variance is supposed to be given sparingly, if at all, and require a hardship, hardship in land, in soil shape or topography.
Right.
Is there a hardship?
I don't see any here, but they, they could use it because the land goes up, I know what you're talking about.
Yeah.
They got a small lot, north of 40, 3,100 square feet lot. Now they wanna put that through.
Right. I, I, I guess, I guess you could record me as being in opposition.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else opposed or undecided? Second call? Third call? Comments? I have my comment, I, I, I mean, I know what they bought. They want a third floor, I don't think it's fair to the people behind them, I don't care. Even the neighbors is doing, it's the next person. I, I just don't think it's fair to put a third story up front. If they wanted a dormer or something, and do a little bit on one side, try to help them, but a full third floor up there, you know, half a third floor, and then a big giant deck. I don't know, you could have a walk-up deck anyways, you can take that off and put a walk-up deck, you can have a walk-up deck, but. You know, it's pretty decent sized house the way it is, and it's a 3,100 square foot lot. Those houses, doesn't have any parking, so I wouldn't be in favor of adding more space to that home.
Next, may I?
My comment is.
I think it's, I think it's super modest for what they're trying to do, I don't, I don't, I don't. I've lived in the area my entire life, I think the impact will be absolutely negligible, if anything. I don't think it's gonna add any parking issues, I don't think it's gonna add any future parking issues. I would like to see some parking, you know, off the street. There's plenty of homes that are higher than this, that we've considered a half-story
Right.
that are not this height, that, and we, that's just my own opinion.
No, I know, it's, it's, to me, it's just more than a half-story.
There's a lot of houses around us that are substantially larger.
Oh, no question, no question.
And, and some of them we've approved.
No question, no question, you got big lots.
I mean, I wouldn't mind seeing taking up a little piece of that backyard with some favors.
Right.
Pop another car on it.
Are they gonna ever do it? You know, are they gonna put, are they gonna put the car back in?
Probably not.
Probably not, so, if somebody's backyard, they're never gonna do it.
Probably not.
I, I don't really have a problem with that.
Right.
Yeah, I would really like to see parking space in the back as an accommodation, because when they do leave this house, those two rooms upstairs could be used for bedrooms. Then you have quite a number of bedrooms, and not enough parking. I think it's a nice looking drawing. I think it adds to the neighborhood, the look is nice, I kinda like how it looks with its design. I would also be in favor of doing chair domes on the existing instead of going up another floor. So, I think so, undecided.
No, I don't mind that, I don't mind you having domes on.
It's gonna look nicer off.
It'll look nicer with a half, but then.
It'll look, that's gonna look much nicer than.
Oh, no question, no question.
Yeah, I don't think it's any present.
And it's not, it, I don't.
I mean, so, yeah, you make the apple.
So I'm saying, I, I understand, and, and I'm just saying, the word third floor.
I get it, I get it, but go.
That's all I'm saying.
There's plenty of room that, that are domed.
Some of them are worse, I've seen them down there.
There's plenty of existing third floors down there.
No question, and I, and I think that they're everywhere.
There's a park across the street, right?
It's open, it's open.
It's open parking down there, but the thing is, it's like.
Parking in summertime on the street, but I mean, there's a park for green space across.
Yeah, it's only two feet, yeah. It's 10 feet, 15 feet maybe at max, you know, it's not like.
So, I mean, take, take some green space out of the backyard, it wouldn't be the worst.
No, I get that.
No, if we can get another parking space or two in the back.
Yeah, plus you pick it up.
I would don't get.
200 square feet of third floor deck.
Right.
Leave a little backyard for that. Side yard off of Monmouth.
Curtain cut, parking spot.
I could go for that.
Give and take.
Who are you thinking, Chris?
I'm, I'm, compared to what's down there, I don't see it as sticking out like some of these things that we.
No, not at all, I think it looks beautiful.
Yeah.
But I'd like to get some parking out there.
Yeah, I agree.
I mean, it, you get some, some down there, everyone goes, you just, you gotta get the cash off the road, so you clean the tanks.
Yeah, you could squeeze a parking place up there, it'll mitigate it, huh?
We can get a curb bed, I ain't worried about a curb bed.
I'm talking to Brian.
Excuse me, pardon? No, we're not, there's a, there's a beautiful, very old pear tree in the corner of the backyard.
To back left or right?
That depends what way you're.
If I'm coming up Monmouth.
If you're, if you're facing up the hill, up Monmouth Street, it's on the right-hand side, so it's basically on the side of the property.
Is there a tree hat there? Did I see a tree hat in there?
Yes.
Huh?
Yes.
Is that on the pear tree?
Pardon?
Is that on the pear tree?
Correct.
Okay.
So, putting a parking space in there would destroy that tree. It's from there since long before we moved in, obviously, circles.
One of the pictures shows a trail on the front and the left-hand side. Yeah, this is, I'm just saying, you could fit a trail, but then you can't fit a car in there.
Well, they fit a car in there.
They fit a car in there.
Yeah.
I mean, you do fit a car in there.
They were just trying to fit two.
I'm trying to fit a couple cars so they have two little spots.
I mean, a lot of people park across the street, I don't know.
They do, I know, yeah.
So.
There, there is enough space on the side of the house for two apartments.
Yeah.
Yeah, when it snows, if you could pull, if you.
Be completely clear.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we take our, we have two cars, we're a two-car family. We take our cars off the street during any summer agency.
And I'm just thinking, there's gonna be two more bedrooms up there when we sell that house, that's all I'm saying, I'm looking for another parking, real parking. I make a motion if you want, just vote.
ZBA 2350, Patrick Foley for variance and finding to construct a third story to the existing dwelling dwelling with a waterside balcony on the premise number 25 B-side Road Quincy. I make a motion to grant the variance and finding.
Second.
On the motion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Post? Aye.
Aye.
I'm opposed.
Aye. 3 to 1, dozen passes. Pear tree is more important, I guess. Further on to tonight's. Huh? Oh. It didn't pass, 3 to 2. Okay. Further on to tonight's, Patrick Foley for variance to raise the roofline on the existing three-family home and increase the living area in the premise number 16-6 dab. Counsel, you're up. Come back if you change it, counsel, in the last case.
Excuse me?
Come back if you change it.
Okay. Evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, my name is Patrick Foley, I'm the attorney representing the proposal for 16-6 dab. I'm joined here today by our architect, Rob Pacini. 16-6 dab is currently a three-family home of 6,837 square feet. This will stay a three-family home. The footprint of this building isn't changing at all, is currently set up as a basement unit, and then that would be unit B, and then unit one and unit two. Unit two will be doing a bump out in the back to make it level with unit one. Also, the second unit will raise the roofline. The roof height itself will not change, but rather the edges will go up three feet, seven inches. The home is already pre-existing non-conforming. The unit sizes will range between 790 square feet and 1,100 square feet. Remember all the box through the building plans?
Okay, sure. I'm going to show up, Cassiopeia, I am the architect, 78 Island Circle in Waymo, Massachusetts. So, I was wondering you guys through the existing plans real quick, and then I'll show you what we're proposing. So, this is the existing basement plan, we have a unit on this floor with a mechanical space. The first floor, we have a unit on this side, and then a unit on this side. There's a stair here, which goes up to the floor above. The floor above has three bedrooms, which is part of that unit. Points of the elevations. So, right now, this is the front of the building, there's a gable roof with a front porch beside of the building, this is that second floor unit I was describing, and then this is the extension on the back of the house at the first floor where we'll be adding an addition on to the. Quick look at the site plan. So, this is that second floor footprint, and there's a little existing section on the side here. This is the grayed out area, is where we're planning to add the addition at the second floor. So, the proposed plans, again, basement, still staying as a single unit, we're just consolidating the capital space a little bit, improving the layout of the basement unit. The first floor will be a single unit now, again, just improving the layout. There'll be a second entrance, so this is the entrance for this first floor unit. A second entrance will utilize these existing stairs to get up to the second floor. So, this second floor will be the third unit, again, these are the stairs coming up. This is the second floor unit, and all we're doing is expanding over the footprint of the first floor. And just to show you the elevations. So, the elevation, this is the front of the building, we're keeping the front porch. We're taking the roof edges, which on the existing building are, are down low, so we're just bumping those up so that we get a better living area in here. Right now, with the roof edge coming down, there's a knee wall here and a slope ceiling, so you basically hit your head on the second floor. So, we're just basically raising the roof edge up to utilize the space better. The ridge height is staying the same, so we're just essentially changing the roof pitch. Looking at the side elevation, so this is the front porch. This is the existing building right here, and then this is the section that we're adding in the back. So, we're essentially just extruding the second floor just to match the first floor. And then, again, the side elevation, and then this is the rear, so.
Okay, how many parking spaces here?
There's a driveway, which currently houses two cars right now, and they use on-street parking right now. It's been a three-family there for a long time.
I know, but you wanna increase that, is there any way of making it go down and get some space?
Yeah, we can get some more space in the driveway.
You really, you really need, because you, you, that one almost the size of that home that's there right now, because what's there right now, I, I, that would be bad, really bad, really bad, I'm sorry, no.
Yeah, how many bedrooms do you have now?
It's, uh, it's, when the time is all done, it's gonna be two twos and a three.
And you have?
Uh, we're, we're adding, we're adding one bedroom now, we'll just change the configuration. The ones are becoming twos, and then we're docking the four down with three.
You have seven bedrooms and two parking spaces. We're still down in six dab, where everyone parking on the street already.
Yeah, there's no parking, I drove down, couldn't even park.
I know, and then, and then you see the side, the only hard part is getting down and back.
Yeah.
But you're gonna do something, I don't know if you could build that up, and, and, you really gotta go back somehow to get back there and park. I mean, you know, you're getting three units with two spots. Most people that got two bedrooms are gonna have two cars, you get two, four, you're gonna have at least six cars there with two parking spaces, it's like.
So, was this legal? Three now?
Yeah, it was legal, they've just been three for a while now, yeah. You just, we actually, they've gotten it right now, the city gave them a permit for that, but this triggered some FAR.
Well, you were getting it, and then they stopped, correct?
No, they still got, still got it.
But they were gunning it.
Yes, and that triggered the, the variance, yes.
How much film would you have to bring in if you wanted to fix some parking on, on them?
I don't know, something, but something gotta give them a lot, it's just, there's, you're gonna have seven bedrooms and you get two parking spaces, how's that work?
Especially down there.
Huh?
Especially down there.
Yeah, there's no, there's no place anywhere.
Couple of three families across the street.
Yeah, and they're all parking the street, good. Now, we're gonna increase this house, double it, and have no parking.
Give and take.
Do what they do in Cayman, it's just, you don't have to park anyway. Those things you want, no park.
They also have banks that don't give cash.
Yeah.
Just, just serious, I want to build a bank, they don't care. It's a cashless bank.
You know, I went to citizens for 15 years, and they told me to back to my house, I laughed with the cash, okay, you can come back at 3. You can. Anyway, I don't know, anyone else here here wanting to go, we can hear from the neighbors.
I think we need to figure a parking for that one, yeah.
I mean, it does, it does go down.
No, it's not.
I mean, you could build it.
You could build it up. And, or you could just drive down.
I was gonna say, we can make it gradual and just do it in the back.
Go right down and park it back in.
Put some aggregate.
While we look at the park, we come back in two, two forwards.
That's a lot.
April, uh, April.
April.
Eight, eight, April 24.
Is July 25?
July 25, August 17, no, uh.
August 11.
August 18.
August 25.
August 18.
When we do the.
I'm not here.
The August 27.
August 22, how many are on there already, you know?
I have two.
We put two on tonight, right? We put two on tonight, right?
I thought you had that before, but I, uh.
No.
We put two on already for the twenty-second, right?
Yes.
We pushed them on, right?
It's for two to three, that's, yeah, but the one who's.
These aren't gonna take, one's gonna take a second, yeah, the other one won't be that bad either, this is just gonna be sort of fine, but we can just look at that quick. The neighbors spoke, all right, why don't we hear from the neighbors first, is there anyone here that wants to speak in favor? Second call, third call, color powder hearing closed, anything from the.
No comment.
Oh, my God, a lot of work to be done. I know what you, Mr. Comment. Uh, you got a letter here from the D P W. that, uh, they've reviewed the case and have no comments, opposed or undecided? Please come up, name and address, we're working for you.
My name is Joe Brandi, I live in fourteen, Sixth Ave., it's Director Butter. My main concern with this is obviously the parking, there's also a fire hydrant in front of that house. Um, people are constantly parked at that fire hydrant. We, we have overflow from Broadway, which you have already discussed, there's a big problem on Broadway I have to deal with. There's a car, I don't know if you saw it, but there's a car that's bubble wrapped in front of a hydrant there.
Yeah.
That, that's, that's something I have to deal with, at the end of the street, Chubbick Street, we have somebody who's, I believe, has a McKinnon shop going on, you probably saw the commercial vehicles along the left at the bottom of Chubbick and Sixth Ave.
So he's running a business out of?
I think he is, I don't know, but I know one of my neighbors has called several times because this car's parked, though there were plates at, say, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, um, anyway.
Red stickers and blue stickers?
Yeah, they're, they're not the right stickers, that, that's for sure, um, so anyway, um, currently, I just wanna really emphasize the problem with the parking here. There are two houses in the neighborhood that are not occupied, and we still have problems with the parking, there's a three-decker across the street in which the, um, woman has decided she doesn't wanna rent out the top two floors, so, that's all gonna come to a roost at some point.
someday, sure.
Um, as bad it is now, it's gonna get worse.
They just heard, that's what we're trying to do, get parking on this place so you can take it off the street.
Well, the other thing here is, um, across the street from me, there's an apartment building in Sixth, well, um, they play games sometimes where they say, okay, we're gonna make sure that we save some in, in the front by parking on the street and leaving the back. I don't need that sneer on next door to me, that's.
Unfortunately, that's everybody, I mean, that, that exists today, so, you know, the, like, the best thing we can do is, is try and.
Get as much parking as you can in the back.
In the lot, but we can't force somebody to park in their lot, it's, it's my biggest pet peeve in the city, because you drive down these streets on a winter day, and there's no, no, when there's a snow emergency, everybody's cars are gone.
Yep.
Drive down today, the streets are, the streets are packed on both sides, we, until we have a parking ordinance in the city, that's citywide, those problems will not, they'll, they'll continue to exist.
Also, um, and this has really nothing to do with the current tenant, but the previous tenant actually lived in the house, and she thought it was okay to throw a bag of salt and a shovel, and, and the, the tenants would take care of things.
I know, you got a brand-new house, that ain't gonna happen, it's, it's gonna be brand-new.
Well, you can't, you can't tell what neighbors are gonna do, but.
The guy investing all his money, he's gonna invest a lot of money in this thing, he's gonna make sure that he's got tenants that are gonna pay their bills and act right.
Walking front, flipping phones.
Doors off.
American dream. That, that's, that's the other issue there, too, um. I mean, that, that, that's what it is, I mean, literally, that's what happens every day. Sorry, well.
No, no, I, I appreciate, I, I appreciate the sentiment, that's exactly, like, but if we don't, if we don't, if we just let it exist today as is, you know, and we don't, we don't approve it, we just say no today, and then keep the exact same place.
You have the same problems either way, he has a, he has a seven-bedroom, you know, three, 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 three-unit house that, with the same parking that he has today, which is one off-street parking. Well, well, currently, it's six bedrooms, they propose to add a seven, which means more cars.
Correct.
Than the previous.
So go ahead.
So if I give him.
What are we talking about here, what, what do you wanna see?
Okay, I wanna see parking in the back, but I'm also opposed to, um, adding that bump out in, in the back, because that's gonna, um, block the sun in, in the morning hitting my house, because I'm next door, so it's gonna create a shadow for a point of the day. Adding the, um, the stairs or whatever's planned there, I'm afraid that, that may, um, increase noise at the side of the house as well.
The eagles?
Yes. I was very surprised not to see that in the first, uh, set of plans, I think I, I asked about that.
I mean, you're not even building the house, you're putting an engine on.
Well, it could be in the back, it could be on the other side.
Could be a lot.
I mean, there, there, there is, um.
When you're going down, you're going down, you're going down, if you go back, you're going down, further you go back, the further down you go.
Like, and, and we can't tell him to put parking in his, in his driveway today without approving anything, like, we, we can't, we can't say today, hey, go put parking in your house. Yes. Unless we go through that to every single house in the city of Quincy. As mentioned, it's, it's a non-conforming. Yeah, it's pre-existing, yeah. Three-family, um, I don't, I mean, that, that's all water under the bridge, but that's what I was gonna say, I don't think it should never, ever have been.
Yeah, of course.
Different times, people.
Did you see, I went, I went to the house, the downstairs basement apartment, as the stairs were coming up to the first floor, and they cut it off, they put a toilet halfway up.
Yes, in, in the, the basement, um.
Unbelievable, like, who, who was thinking like that, 'cause they wanted to get above the pipe, wanted to get above the sewer.
Yeah, so.
That's what they did, so they cut the stairs off, put a toilet there, following up, up like six feet, so you gotta block up six feet, and then, and then there's a roof that's probably a foot above your head at that, on the trunk. I didn't think they had a foot, I think they had really, like, get in there like that.
Yeah.
And there's the.
Maybe they didn't have sandy floor.
So who lived in there before, I don't know, that was.
Well, at this point, it doesn't make any difference, but the way that they had it configured down there is that if family was living on the right-hand side, it was okay, the doors would be open or unlocked, but when they rented to people outside of the family, that door was locked, if somebody had to get out
Yeah.
the side, they couldn't do it unless somebody unlocked the door, but that, that's water under the bridge.
Of course, but I mean, I just can't believe that if that was that, what was the rest of the house like, I can't even imagine what it was like, I got there, it's got stripped, it's got it now. It's been held together with two picks.
Yes, um, they, they let it go quite bad.
Yeah, I love the gray, we're all gray in it, but, so what would you like to see? No stairs, moving stairs?
I, if they could move them to the back, yeah, that, that would be better.
Yeah.
Well, as, as I said, the, the main thing is, is the parking.
Right, that's what we feel, and you get the parking space to some of the bedrooms as well.
And they'd like to have better neighbors, although he can't control that, but.
No, he can't.
Well.
But he can't, he's gonna be renting, he can't.
Well, across the street, they're.
Oh, most people, I don't know.
No, but I'm, I'm just saying, they, they, they have.
You get a choice, you can move two.
Yes, but I, I've lived there my whole life, I don't feel that I shouldn't live, I shouldn't.
No, I'm not saying that, I'm saying, but if it's that bad, why would you put yourself through that, having to be similar to that?
Well, for the most part, I like my neighbors and I enjoy the neighborhood.
Oh, okay, so the neighbors are good then?
Yes.
Oh, you just said I wish I had better neighbors.
On that side, because, as I was going to allude, when they did shovel, they, they throw snow onto my side, and the way, oh, I didn't mention, the way.
It happened once in my house.
Well, they, they never shovel, and I, me and another.
It seemed better, don't shovel.
To, um.
Snow over there.
Me and the neighbor two doors down used to shovel for that woman occasionally, until her, her, um, children moved in, and then we stopped.
Right.
The, the other thing about that is the current configuration of the house is, when we do get snow, on that side between, um, the white house and there, there, the greenhouse, whatever you wanna call it now, because it's. Anyway, because of the configuration of house, you get three inches over there, and I get a foot and a half drifted against my house, and I think if, if, if they're allowed to go up, that's gonna increase the drift on my house, so.
That looks exactly what you're saying, my buddy's got a garage, right? Our driveway's put together, I get six feet, he gets two inches, and I, not, well, it's clean, 'cause he's got a driveway, he's got a garage, I gotta build a garage.
That's why I sounded jealous earlier, the person built a garage.
I did, he could change that, he's got, he's got, he's gotta write the bill for himself, come on, gotta write the bill for him. It's a three-family house, he owns it, he's owned it for a while, I guess.
So, just a, a second question, because I, I would be interested in doing the same thing to my house, to be honest with you, uh.
Riff and raze.
What's that?
What do you got, two-family?
Um, it's not listed as a two-family, but my father bought it as a two-family, and he rented out.
Paying taxes for a single family.
He rented out the, um, the second floor, but then, that was in the sixties, so, from the seventies on.
Question, is it a two-family? No, your taxes you're paying for a single family, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so it's a single family.
Yes, but it, it's, it's currently configured at, with a kitchen and.
It can be a three-family, but if it's a single family, it's a single family.
Okay, but my, my house is not the, is not really what we're talking about.
No, but you are, you wanna do that to your house, okay, come back with us, whatever, we have a new one, what do you, what's, what's, what else do you need?
That, that's it.
All right, thanks, is there anyone else, opposed or undecided? Can we move the dig gentleman, color powder hearing closed?
Can we get a parking plan, what else do we need?
Get a parking plan.
What else?
Give him a porch to the rear.
Yeah, if you can move the porch to the rear, if you can move the, uh.
Stance. At least look for it.
I can look at it.
Then we're coming back.
Twenty.
Sir.
August twenty-second.
ZBA twenty-three dash fifty-one, Patrick Foley for a variance to raise the roof lines of the existing three-family home to increase the living area on the premise number sixteen, Sixth Avenue, Quincy, make a motion to move to August twenty-second.
On the motion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, come on, come on.
Going to adjourn.
Bug it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, come on.